And with a little introduction before we get into the agenda, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by city council at the past judgment on request for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with a land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on their request should raise their hand and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium and sign in on the sheet provided. The speaker should identify themselves with name, address, and indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, a next-door neighbor or live behind the property, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertaining to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of the public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes for approval are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant does have the right to appeal the board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. And also, we'd like at this time to introduce the members of the board and the city staff that are here tonight. Starting on my far left, your right is Glenn Clark. Next to him is Michael Bartnik. And then to my immediate left is Thomas Strat, who not only sits on the board but is also the liaison to the planning commission for the city. I'm Dave Lambert. I'm the chairman. Next to me is Alan Neal, who is the vice chairman of the board. Next to Alan is Bill Fisher. And last but not least is Ken Courtney. And then from city staff, we have Paul Evans, the zoning and compliance specialist. And then last but not least is Susan Lancaster, our assistant city attorney. And with that, we will dive into the agenda with a roll call.
Mr. Bartnik?
Present.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Strat?
All are present. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July meeting. Is there any questions or a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Courtney moves to approve. Mr. Fisher seconds the motion to approve. Any questions or concerns about the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Neal.
My only comment is at the bottom of page two, my name is spelled wrong. If you can fix that, that's the only comment that I have.
Okay. Any other corrections to the minutes?
Move to a minute. No, I guess I'll...
Yeah, we won't worry about that. We'll just assume that the...
That's a typo that we can correct.
Evans will correct the typo there. Any other corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we are ready for the roll call for the minutes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes. The minutes from the July meeting are approved.
I like that better.
After that, now we have postponed items. The first one on here is a variance request from Jeff Glaser from our credit union at 6693 Rochester Road. This was taken, I believe, at our February meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct, yes.
And being brought back tonight again. I would like to indicate to the board, I did not do this last time, and it's my, I'd like to apologize to the board, but wanted to know if you feel there is a potential conflict of interest. The company I work for has a business relationship with our credit union, so if anyone believes that I have a conflict of interest, you know, I would be happy to step down from this board for this item if anyone is concerned about it or more explanation on the nature of the relationship. Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, maybe if you could explain in greater detail.
The company I work for is called Central Corporate Credit Union, and we offer several services to our credit union. For example, wire transfers, automated clearinghouse transactions. So we're like a correspondent bank for our credit union. I don't believe I have a conflict, but it's up to the board if they believe they want to excuse me from this.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Well, could you, you've explained to me your position within said entity, but maybe for the purposes of explaining to the other board members and how that would perhaps not be directly related, but certainly clearly, weekly indirectly, I believe?
My direct job responsibilities are primarily communication there. We're prepare our newsletters, update our website, and also perform some compliance duties as well to ensure that we're not in violation of federal or state law.
Mr. Chairman, would help to clarify, you probably represent numerous credit unions, not just them?
Yes, we have, yes. Our credit union is one of approximately 300 credit unions that we work with in the state.
I don't see that as any more conflict than the fact that I walk in there to make deposits.
Okay. If no one wants to offer a motion to excuse me, then we place that on the public record as if anyone is concerned about that. And we will then, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Evans for a presentation of facts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property for item 3A is located in an area south of South Boulevard and west of Rochester Road. More specifically, it's on the northwest corner of Rochester Road and East Level. The subject property is zoned to office, and the nature of today's subject request involves also the need to be aware of the zoning of the property to the north, which is a one-family Tonight's request is a variance from the requirement that a six-foot-high obscuring wall be provided between the subject property and the residentially-zoned property north of the subject location. So that would be sandalwood condominiums. There's little history behind this matter with the Board of Appeals. This request first appeared before this board in 2007. They were granted a temporary one-year variance from the requirement that that six-foot-high separation wall be constructed along the north property line. In 2008, 2009, and 2010, this board granted additional one-year variances. Now, earlier this year, the applicant requested that the board grant them a permanent variance, that that six-foot-high wall be constructed along the north property line. Now, in February of 2011, this board held a public hearing on the matter, and they postponed the matter to tonight's meeting to allow the neighbors to the north an opportunity to address their concerns with the applicant. So in order to be successful tonight, this board is going to have to grant a variance from the requirement to that obscuring wall, which is the subject of the request.
Any questions? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster, is the six-foot wall required still under the new ordinance?
Good question.
The zoning administrator has the option to require a six-foot wall and/or, there's a couple landscaping alternatives that are, may be required depending on what the zoning administrator chooses. I discussed this with the applicant. Because they did apply under the old ordinance, he would request that the board proceed with this matter under the old ordinance provisions.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions from Mr. Courtney?
Is it, from a practical view standpoint, could they do the landscaping items that might be required in lieu of a wall?
Well...
Or is there insufficient land for that?
I don't know. What I can say is according to this plan here, there's less than four feet between the curb and the property line to the north.
Oh, okay.
So...
That kind of thing.
It's not clear what could be put in there, and we haven't researched it yet for the applicant because he wanted to see how he could do here tonight.
Not too likely. You couldn't vermin at any point.
I doubt it.
Yeah. Any more questions? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could inquire of Mr. Evans, you know, I think if I'm following the bouncing ball correctly in my memory banks, really, we're here tonight awaiting communication back from the homeowner association. There hasn't been any change regarding the applicant's request to this board, but yet I remember, I don't remember if the gentleman's here tonight. They were going to have a meeting within their association and have a conversation of what would be acceptable to them, what wouldn't. My question is, have you been in communication with the neighborhood association in question?
We have not heard from the neighbors to the north, and perhaps the applicant could provide what he has heard from the neighbors to the north.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? I have one, Mr. Evans. I happened to walk the property last night to see what it looked like up close and personal and saw, and I'm sure the applicant can attest that it's like a jungle between the two pieces of property, that how anyone would even want to attempt to cross through that plant, planted area there, they'd have to be awful brave because it looked like a lot of pricklers and maybe poison ivy back in there. Would be, instead of requiring a wall, would we be able to say, stipulate that the applicant would not be able to remove the plant material that's there currently?
Well, because there's less than four feet between the existing curb of the parking lot and the property line, you could say that, but I'm just not sure what vegetation actually exists on the proponent's property.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions from staff? Mr. Clark?
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That would be just my, I guess my last question would be, who owns what there? You know, the four, I drive by that property a lot. My church is right across the street. And once again, you know, without getting the tape measure out, you know, I'm not really proficient as far as knowing, you know, who owns what as far as that. And I guess to Mr. Evans, I would really just ask this question, because it's been a long time since this board has dealt with living vegetation when it, down the road, expires. I mean, every living thing eventually dies, and so who's responsible for that? And, you know, if it's on the credit union's property side, what's their responsibility under the ordinance to replace it perhaps? Or do we have to put a stipulation in if it dies with so many days, a new living tree, bush, shrub needs to be put in there? And vice versa for the condo association? I guess that's not...
Essentially, anytime the city approves landscaping, whether existing or installed as part of a plan, what's shown on that plan or as part of that approval needs to be maintained. If it dies or substantially changes in condition, it's going to need to be brought back somehow to the condition. So in the example that, say, this board were to request vegetation of a certain type, if that vegetation died in 10 years, you know, there's still, unless this board, the question comes back before this board, they're going to have to maintain that vegetation in perpetuity.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll invite the applicant or applicants to come up forward and maybe answer some of the questions that have already been posed here, and be sure to sign in on the little clipboard there.
Good evening, gentlemen. Jeff Glaser from our credit union. Mr. Evans, I think pretty eloquently described what we've gone through. First, just a little background, the first several variances were actually under the prior owner, and that's when he was in the process of trying to develop the property. We got involved about a year ago when we purchased the property, about the same time the last variance, temporary variance, was given. We came to the board in February, and we were asking for a variance on the western wall and the northern, I'm sorry, the western property line and the northern property line. At that point, the board sought fit to give us a variance on the western side of the property. Because the homeowner association representative had said that they had some possible concerns, the board asked if I'd be willing to meet with them and then table it. And I was, I said absolutely. We exchanged information. I said, let me know, here's my contact information, call me, I'll come whenever. I've never heard from them. So as far as I was concerned, or I am, as far as I'm concerned, this is a non-issue. I have some more pictures. The pictures that Paul was showing are, dare I say, were earlier in the spring.
Earlier in the spring.
Or late in the fall, actually, when that was done. And actually, since then, you can see the temporary power line there. There's actually another pole that's been put in, which is part of the issue. If we were to have to put in a planning, you know, like Mr. Evans explained, there's about four feet from the curb to where the heavy vegetation starts, and that's what our property exists of. With the poles that are along the curb, realistically, there's more like a two-foot strip unless we went around it. If the board, I have a bunch of pictures. I took some pictures, both from the condominium side, that shows, and I can pass them around. It's like you can barely see through the thick woods, the, okay, you can barely see our roof. And likewise, if you look from the other direction, and I got pictures all around this whole area, it is thickly wooded. I didn't measure the four foot from the curb, but I will give you my best guess, it's pretty close to the edge of where the woods start. When we took over the property, it was an empty lot with, I don't believe there's any real trees on it. We actually added more trees to it than were there. We did add some trees along the back that are newer, and we just think it's not necessary. And when you look at the pictures and you see the density, even in the winter, which are the pictures, these pictures are later, and you can see the ones that are in the wintertime, it's still even, because it's so thick. And this actually is a pretty good picture. You see both poles, and you can see a piece of, that's three pieces of sod basically wide, which is about four feet. And so you can see where our sod ends is about where the property line is. It's kind of muddled now because as things grow over. We just think it's overkill, it's not necessary, and the expression that someone used was, we basically be putting trees in the woods if we planted something. And we think that the concerns that they had were, they had listed two concerns. One was a noise, which quite honestly, our building, I think, actually blocks more noise than was there before, which was an empty lot. And they're worried about garbage, paper products, which has not been an issue. I haven't had any complaints from any of the neighbors. And like I told the board before, we're trying to, we go paperless as much as possible, paperless receipts, things of that nature, so we don't create a lot of paper on purpose. And our hours of operation are until 6:00, so it's not like we have nighttime traffic that are constantly driving through there either. So if the board has any other questions of me, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for the petitioners? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the woods that are to the north of your building, those woods are actually on the, are owned by the, to your knowledge, are owned by the condominium association?
Yeah, and based on this picture, and like I said, you can see three rows of sod, and a piece of sod is almost two feet, not quite. So, and again, I'm purely guesstimating here, but that's at least four feet from the curb to the, where that third row of sod stops. So that, the woods are actually on their property.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Strat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, based on the zoning ordinance, our concern is the headlights more than anything else, okay? And obviously, the vegetation is going to diminish during the winter. Would you have any objections just at the beginning of the lot, as soon as you come in off of Rochester Road, and maybe about 25 or 30 feet, if you were to provide a series of hedges that would actually complement the wooded area, but maintain, yeah, right there, yeah, just along there, so that when people drive in, at least the headlights, in lieu of a fence? I totally agree with you on a fence, but I'm more concerned about the headlights going around, especially as they go around to the drive-through.
Understand, I do understand the concern. The one thing that should be noted is that the first structure, and it's kind of hard to see in those pictures, the first structure is actually almost in line with our dumpster, the dumpster enclosure, which is in the very...
I have your site plan right in front of you.
Okay.
Excuse me. So I know it's 3.7 feet, and it's written right on here as to what the distance is.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to explain...
Structure of the building north.
Is that the first unit, the first condominium unit is actually almost in line with the dumpster. So it's, it's...
I understand.
Okay.
I understand it.
Again, I, we do have some trees planted there. You can see them in the site plan there in the front corner. And the very, when they first pull in there to the, just to the north of the entrance there, there's the two trees that are in that drawing.
Right. The trees aren't going to block the headlights. The trees are up high, the headlights are below. So the trees aren't going to do it. What I'm concerned about is something low that would blend in with the wooded area, complement your entry area as well.
Aren't those condos quite a bit higher, though? As opposed, I mean, they're...
They are.
The elevation of those condos is...
If you look at the one picture, the condominium units, the garages are on floor level.
You're not receptive to that. That's what you're throwing me.
I would prefer not. I just think it's...
Okay.
I'd be fighting an issue with trying to get them to grow in the shade of the trees.
Any more questions? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I recall vaguely, if I'm not incorrect from your previous visit here, that the entrance off of Rochester Road, which is to the upper right there, those, the cars would either proceed, I'm talking about headlights here, potential headlights, proceed in a westernly direction, or they would turn south, correct? Then pop into those parking spots in front. But I'm not sure, because I haven't actually driven your property, just driven by. I don't know. Can the cars go back out? It looks like they can go back out that same, there's a median there to the upper right where they can pop back out. So hypothetically, they, the cars, to this gentleman's concerns, they could go south and pull in and then go back north to pull out versus being required to come through and then exit out your southerly, southernmost exit there, or...
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess that's, my point is, is that if a car does go all the way around the property to go back out into the Rochester Road entrance/exit, their headlights, first off, would be quite a distance away from the property line, but also, it doesn't even come close to the first unit. I mean, again, even in the dead of winter, when the trees are at their least and the brush undergrowth is at its least, it's not even coming, I mean, those condos are way back. And again, my concern would be is to plant something, it's going to be fighting, getting that stuff to grow, you know, in the shade, and it's just...
But, I know a little bit about automotive technology, because I've worked in the industry for a short amount of time, and the headlights that the manufacturers are putting on these cars tend to be brighter and project further than they ever used to under the, my first 1974 Oldsmobile. So I think that perhaps could be a problem. And I understand your point about the garage being on the main level. Are any of those condos have walkout basements where they would have? And I also know headlights don't just project straight, they, you know, it illuminates a much larger area up and down. But are, do the condos have any walkout on first floor there?
I can't say for certain because I've never been in one, but it's my understanding from looking at them from the outside, that all the living spaces on the second and third floor, which would be a minimum of eight feet high or six feet high, I should say, because all of them have a walkout front porch, you have to step up front porch, I should say.
Right.
And it appears that it's just a garage on the first floor. So, I mean, the headlights would have to be shooting six to eight feet up in the air in order to really, and be pointed directly. And for that, I mean, there was a gentleman that lived on the south side of level that during construction expressed a concern about headlights. And we actually, he approached our construction foreman, and I actually at that point said, well, if it's an issue, we'll be willing to plant trees on his property. It's the first house right behind the orthodontist and the hair, tortoise and the hare. And the gentleman's never been back because it's a non-issue. You know, we did actually address it and actually turned off some of the lights that are underneath the canopy in the drive-through to have just the first lane lit up for that reason. But also because of the planes that we have, and because it's really not a huge issue, also because we close at 6:00. And so headlights, realistically, except for the few drive-through transactions that happen from 6:00 till 6:00 in the morning, I mean, you'll have a handful of people that will drive through to use the ATM. Other than that, we really don't, we're not a nighttime business to speak of. So there's not a lot of headlights and a lot of traffic coming through that lot.
Any more questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, if you could take a seat, we'll open the public hearing and see if anyone here is here to address the board on this issue. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on this particular request? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I would indicate, I believe, we have one communication from a neighbor, from the condo association opposing the request for the variance, and that's the only one that I'm aware of in our packet.
Right, that's the one we have.
Okay. Any more questions from board members, or does someone want to offer a resolution? Mr. Bartnik?
I guess I would like a follow-up question of the petitioner.
Sure.
Go, go ahead. If, Mr. Evans, if you could put up page 24, I believe, and then page 20. The photographs on those two pages. I think I see what Mr. Straight is talking about here, because if I'm looking at 20, and this is, my question is directed to the petitioner.
Is this the one?
Twenty...
Twenty-four.
That should be 20, yeah.
I'm looking at one that actually shows, it says it's the west property line.
Oh, okay.
Is what I'm looking at. Yeah, that one there. And I think if you look in the upper right-hand quarter of that photograph, that's where the condos are. So I'm trying to figure out where that direction is, and this is in the wintertime. Yes, there is vegetation, but I can, I'm a little, where is that photograph taken from? Is that from the street or from the building?
Actually, that's, I'm standing in the, underneath the drive-through canopy facing west, which is the wall that, or the variance was already granted. That faces the pond to the west of our property. And those, and I don't know how big that pond is.
Sure.
Got to be 200 yards maybe, but it's, those are far away. And if you look to the trees to the right, you can see where that's, the wooded area starts actually, and then continues all the way up to the front of the property line along the northern border. So, you know, but yeah, I'm standing in the drive-through looking, so I'm behind my building looking back, looking...
On the west edge of the building looking back. All right.
Yeah.
Then how about, I hope, thank you. How about exhibit, page 24? Exactly, it looks, yeah, page 24, that says our CU North Lot Line. Next page. There, so that's actually, is that looking north?
Correct. That is, I'm at the, standing in the entrance on level.
Okay, thank you.
Facing north. So the question that Mr. Clark had was if cars were to go all the way around and then go back out, they would be pointing, well, just left of that, the construction trailer. And there are, you know, if you look to the far left, you can see that's the first unit to the left of that, there's, to the left of that pole is the first unit of the association. So when cars come in, they basically virtually go straight. They don't point north to go around the building. There's a slight jog to go around the, but it's pretty much a straight shot in to go around the building. The only time they're actually facing towards the condo association at all, the property, would be this look right here, which wouldn't be even facing their, any of their buildings.
So, if I can ask another question?
Sure.
So between the, in this photograph here, you've got your building... So between the, in this photograph here, you've got, your building is on the left of the photograph.
Mm-hmm.
There's a construction trailer to the right. Is that a construction trailer?
Yes.
And a couple of construction sheds, or tool sheds?
Uh...
Portage.
Well, actually, the ones are sign, and then the other ones are two portageons.
Portageons, okay. Is there a driveway? Is that the entrance from Rochester?
Yeah, if you see the kind of washed-out beige to the right of the light pole there, that's our sign, which is the middle of the island.
Okay.
Of the entrance. So when you come in, on the, which will be the northern side of that, it's almost, it's almost a straight shot in. There's a slight jog.
But are there any condominium units located between the construction shed and your building in this photograph?
No, if you look to the light pole, it's the left light pole, and just left of that, that's the first unit.
Okay.
Right where his hand is now.
All right, thank you.
Any more, yes, Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Evans, quick question. The wooded area is owned by the condo complex, correct?
Right.
Is there any guarantee that the condo complex is going to keep that wooded area there forever?
I don't know. I know some of it appears to be either a wetland or a floodplain, but it's not clear from the plans if they're, they have to keep it there.
Because my concern is if the wooded area is cleared out, whether by fire or if the condo complex decides to clear it out, then we have no barrier for the driveway. So if we're looking at a permanent variance, that would be my issue, because the wooded area is not on the applicant's property. So that's my concern.
Mr. Neal, did you have something that I'll go to Mr. Courtney?
No, I didn't.
Okay, Mr. Courtney.
I, I think that if the condo is worried about looking at the drive, they wouldn't take down the woods.
Just curious for the future.
But if, if they did, yeah, they'd be looking straight at the driveway.
Or if a fire took it out, that's, you know, an act of nature takes it out, then where are we?
Well, then they have to grow it back, or, of course, if it's floodplain, or if they were going to build on it, even, I don't know if they could even do that.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know.
We have any more questions for the petitioners? You can have a seat again, so, thanks. Yes, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the gentlemen at the far end of the table here are making some very valid points. And to Mr. Fisher's point, not just fire, but also disease, which does happen to plant life on a regular basis. I guess, you know, when I look at this, I step away from it, you know, whenever we vote and consider these, I always say, "Well, what if I was living right there?" And I guess the obvious question that's going through my mind is, if we grant this variance right now, and something does happen to that vegetation down the road, which could and may very well happen, then the onus or the ball is, falls on the lap of the condo association to pay for it. Unless there's, I guess there's something written into the variant, or the variance is offered or granted here tonight. But I don't know how you do that to say, "Well, you know, they", meaning the condo, or the credit union, has got to do something on the property of the condo associations when we're not here talking to representatives from the condo association and to negotiate that." And Mrs. Lancaster could address that, perhaps. It just seems to me, it's a little bit odd. And I think at the end of the day, yes, the vegetation there is sufficient for screening. I don't know, I believe if I lived there, I'd probably want the wall, you know, because it's a permanent structure, or a very, almost permanent structure, which will be there for many, many years guaranteed, no matter what happens in nature. So that's my very big concern. I'm surprised we're not hearing from more condo co-owners there, because those are not, you know, starter homes there. They're expensive, and they're very nice, and so forth. So my concern on any of these angles I'm looking at is that we're talking about things that we can't negotiate. And it's okay for him to say, well, this gentleman to say, it'd be better for the landscaping to be over there, but if that was part of some compromise agreement, or even a contract, that would be different. But we don't have that to go on. So maybe perhaps our city attorney could address that.
Mrs. Lancaster, you want it?
Well, you can't control what's going to happen on surrounding property, and there's all kinds of things that can change. And you are correct that once you give a variance, it runs with the land, and any future owners would not have to put up a wall. On the other hand, it's recognized under our new ordinance that trees are a valuable barrier. And now the new ordinance allows certain trees, in this particular case, those trees happen to be owned by somebody else. So it's a tough decision to make. You cannot put any conditions on sandalwood, because they are not a party to the application. The only thing, if you are concerned about anything happening to those trees, you might be able to put a condition on waving the wall, but put a condition that says, "In the future, should an act of nature", I'm not sure that you want to say, "Should the condominium association take them down", because in that case, they've made a choice. But should an act of nature take them down, and the condominium association chooses not to replace them, you might want to revisit it at that time. It would leave it open-ended, and we'd have to keep a record of that. But if that would solve the problem of your concern for the future, you could do that. And again, it's all discretionary with the board, how you feel about it, what you figure out is best for this particular situation.
I mean, Mr. Courtney, then, Mr. Strat?
I wondered if it was legally possible to require that they, if the vegetation that exists disappears, if they'd be required to put in a hedge row?
You could indicate in your motion that if the vegetation disappears, the applicant would have to come to the city and discuss with the building, because under our new ordinance, they would be able to put up some vegetation. So I'm not sure how you would word that, but the variance would be granted on the condition that if the vegetation on the bordering property disappears, then the petitioner would be required to come back and discuss further, that the variance would terminate, is I guess what you would say, and the applicant would have to come back. So it would give them, you an opportunity to discuss it. Now, then you'd be back into the ballpark of saying, "Well, it's not our property." You'd be talking about that four-foot, you'd either, and at that point, because it's a, it's under our, you would want this to read that it would be whatever's in existence under our new ordinance, Mr. Evans might be able to approve it with a screen, with some landscaping. So that might solve the problem. In other words, Mr. Evans would take care of it internally if the vegetation disappeared. How anybody's ever going to put that in motion, I don't know, but...
Mr. Strat?
Yeah, the, I wonder if you could go to section, or, Mr. Evans, 24, back to the photograph on 24. That's not the one I'm looking for. Oh, no. That's the one, right there. Okay, if you look at where the shed is, or the construction trailer is, right at that point is the actual entry to the turnaround going to the back of the drive-through. And you can see on the left, or just where the entrance is, that is where the first condo is located. Now, as you turn around from that point, you are directly facing that unit. And what I was proposing, and what I asked, was if the vegetation could be put in the four-foot greenbelt area, or the distance between the curb and that, enhancing the growth, and blocking it all the way across there, as the car turns around and he's facing north, until he is due west, rather, as he's going north, and then as he turns west, I don't care about the lights beyond that point. It's that turnaround that I had concern with. And I am concerned that the vegetation could go bad on the other property side. Well, we want to make sure he is providing some vegetation or some screen wall. Now, that is the least, or he puts in a wall there for at least, let's say, the, for 50 feet, one or the other, to protect that entry. Can you go to the site plan? And you can see, as he turns around, as one comes in, as he's turning, yeah, that's it, right there, he is actually facing, until he goes due west, right there. That's where I'm talking, about blocking that strip right along and through there. And to me, on a planning commissioner, on a planner, that's one of the things that we tried to do, is we tried to block at least that portion of it. But beyond that point, that would be my recommendation, and that's where I would vote against the providing a full conditional waiver on it.
Mr. Neal?
Yes. And this, this is a guidance question from staff. It's really kind of a two-part item, but one, without doing any research, but just to your knowledge. The idea of having a granting of variance that's based on conditions that could change in the future, such as vegetation dying and whatnot. Do we have any record of ever having issued something of that nature that comes to your mind? Or maybe I should ask Mr. Courtney, because your tenure here is such that...
I can't think of one, but that's not to say that one couldn't exist.
Okay, that's what I kind of thought.
If I could add to that?
Sure, please.
Let's say vegetation doesn't, an act of God doesn't destroy it for 20 years. Staff has changed, files get filed, just keeping a record of a condition, even though it's legally a condition and can be enforced, you always have that issue with, is anybody going to catch it to enforce it?
Right, and you're, thank you for saying that. You're touching on my next issue, which is what's the practical aspects of actually administratively, from the city's perspective, staying on this? Because we can't put an onus on the condo complex. And it just seems to me problematic to go with some sort of motion that's, I guess, segmented. The best compromise, just my opinion that I can come up with, is a low decorative wall that blocks the headlights, that looks nice, it's stone or something of that nature, maybe not the same height, but with the vegetation being off-site and owned by the condo complex, it's, I can't really consider it as part of the barrier. Thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes, that, I guess, when you consider what could be happening, I think Mr. Strat had the best option at this point, which is hedges in that area where the car does turn. The rest of it, you don't need.
Is that, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to inquire, because we're under new rules now with the, well, I guess the petitioner's asking for the old rules, but essentially, if this is, if the petitioner's request is denied here tonight, it could go back, his request could go back to Mr. Evans to work out, under the new ordinance, as far as the moving forward. I don't know if he has, if we would refile, what have you, but it would be either working along with you, either a wall or landscaping and so forth.
Administratively, we've got two landscape options, or if need be, a solid wall or fence could administratively be required there if he didn't get what he was approved for tonight.
So the petitioner would have to refile, for you to consider that?
No, essentially, he'd meet with us, and we'd review the ordinance, and talk to his landscape people, or just let him know what we thought would be appropriate. And then if he needed a fence permit, we'd give him a fence permit. If it's landscaping, we'd just ask him to amend the original site plan to show where the landscaping could go, and what kind of species it can be, minimum height, that kind of thing.
Just my final, under discussion here, my final thoughts here on this is, you know, I believe that the petitioners had a very, you know, beautiful building built in Troy, and add something to the character of our community. And I'm a supporter of credit unions, but I also look at the picture here, which is, you know, as far as negotiations, it's like, what's mine is mine, what's yours is negotiable, as far as wanting vegetation on other people's property, and not wanting what the ordinance is. I just have a hard time, you know, understanding why this board should approve the request. You know, I understand on the west area, there's a pond, and the homes are set way far back out, but this, I think, is a different story. So I would have a hard time supporting this proposal.
Any more questions, or someone want to offer a resolution? Mr. Courtney?
Before we get too far, you say you have a couple of options.
Yes. Would you like to see those options?
Are they, are they, is what, is the item that has been discussed as far, like Mr. Strat discussed, is that, would that fit in the options?
I don't know if I can say a final answer. It may, it probably would. Let me show you the options we have here. Screening alternative two, according to the ordinance, calls for, I can't read that. What does it say, large evergreen trees, 10 feet?
Yes.
So some large evergreen trees. Now, I've been out to the site, and knowing that there's only four feet, I can see evergreen trees getting mature and interfering with traffic, and becoming, well, more trouble than, you know. The third option is a combination of large evergreen trees and smaller evergreens. And then the ordinance goes on to say that right here, a solid wall or fence where land activity creates light, a landscape buffer or solid opaque wall or fence may be required.
Okay, you could not, then, do, do the type of thing that Mr. Strat has suggested. We would have to do that, then. Because otherwise, you'd have to go the full length.
Well...
And that...
It may put us in a situation, yeah, like we're talking about now, a partial barrier along a portion of the property. The ordinance suggests that if any part of the parking area that's between the residential should be screened fully. So it would put us into a situation a little different than what Mr. Strat is suggesting. That's right.
Mr. Neal?
Paul, I was wondering, from just looking at the language in item three, if I'm reading this properly, it says, "Solid opaque wall or fence may be required."
Right.
And then it says, is there anything in the language that allows us to not, well, to put a partial wall, or partial break, whatever it's vegetation or not, not the full length of the property? It seems like...
It's not clear from the language that would allow us too much flexibility to say, "Put a wall or fence along half the parking area," say, the first 50 feet of the parking area is 100 feet wide.
Yeah.
But if the board were to consider a modification of perhaps this language, maybe that might be one way to more specifically address what this board may want to do, but also allow staff not requiring us to do exactly what that ordinance says.
Right, I'm thinking of what item three says, but then I follow with item four, and it talks about a combination, and I'm trying to take that whole section as, maybe it's intended, all aspects of it, and put it together and say, you know, instead of a combination being wall and fence, maybe the combination essentially is a partial barrier. I don't know, it's just my, I'm wondering if the language works.
That's a good point. And knowing that other residents have come in with concerns, we would probably be cautious to administer the ordinance in a conservative manner. The more we take away, it could be argued that we didn't require the wall, or the fence, or landscaping that the ordinance requires, the more we may be subject to saying, "Well, you know, you didn't think about us when you made your administrative decision." If the board, on the other hand, were inclined to make a decision like that, it would be very clear after a public hearing what the intent was.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Along those same lines, this is one of those variances that is kind of straddling the two variances, because the variance was originally from, if we didn't have the new ordinance, what you'd be looking at is waving the screen wall, and you could put a condition for the hedge proposed by Mr. Strat. And that would end it. If he didn't want to do that, he would have to come back to Paul and say, "I don't want to take the action the board did. I want to look at what you've got under the new ordinance." So you can consider the things that are in the new ordinance, excuse me, because it does straddle it. But basically, when you're looking at granting the variance tonight, they want you to look at it under the old terms, which was a straight waiver, and then you can put a condition on it for a hedge. And that would be something different than what our current ordinance allow, would allow Mr. Evans to do.
Thank you. Mr. Strat?
You know, when we, thank you, Mr. Chairman, when we originally drafted the new ordinance, you cannot possibly legislate every possible condition. It's impossible. That's what the purpose of this board is, and the intent of having administrative approval process. We tried to give some flexibility, but it's impossible. Every condition is different. And we have nothing but problem sites now that are going to be coming up continuously. So, you know, it was very hard to draft that up. And, you know, it was a difficult situation. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is an excellent example of a real top... So I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is an excellent example of a real tough, tough situation. I just, you know, to me, the intent of the ordinance is to block the headlights. And, and as was pointed out, the further away you get, the higher the beam gets and the stronger they are. I mean, that is our intent, and the closer you are to the vehicle in blocking it, the less height you have to have. So that's what I, what we tried to do. That was our intent. Now, how we work it out legally, I don't know. We got legal counsel there. That's, I'm not sure how to do that, but I can only tell you that it's a difficult, difficult situation, and it was very difficult to draft up every possible condition in the ordinance. You're not going to do it.
Did you want to offer a resolution similar to what Mrs. Lancaster had suggested?
I didn't hear what she said, but the legal counsel here...
Mr. Barton, maybe he wants to...
Mr. Stratt, I'll make, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. For purposes of identification, I think in the photograph or the drawing that's up there on the
Right now?
The screen, I think there's a tree there that I assume is numbered. I can't make it out on my photograph here. It looks like number 35, 3954.
Is it this tree here?
No, the next tree to the left. That tree there.
Okay.
So whatever number tree that is... Can you see what number that is?
No, I can't.
Oh, all right.
We have other plans in the office that probably will show it.
All right, well, for purposes of the members, that's the tree that I'm talking about. But I would make a motion to approve the request for the waiver of the screen wall requirement west of that tree, on the north side of the property, west of that tree, and then east of that tree, which is going from that tree to this, end, edge of the property line on Rochester Road, that the requirement could be modified to either have us an opaque wall or a hedge of evergreen, evergreen or cedar type hedge, hedges.
Second to the motion. Mr. Courtney seconds it.
Mr. Chairman, may we make a suggestion for clarity? I'm not sure if this is where Paul is going or not, but does the maker of the motion and the second or have any problem if Paul figures out an actual dimension that you've just said, which was from the back of the property to that tree, and then I think what you're asking is that there would be a hedge, whatever the distance would be from that tree to the front of the property, so that we actually have four feet located here in the motion? And we can't do that tonight because Paul can't, I mean, we can't even read it.
I've got a comfort level, and that's why I circled this tonight, to know what we're talking about, but I did have two questions for Mr. Barton and Mr. Courtney. A, did we want to specify the height of that opaque wall or evergreen fence, a minimum height? And then B, I have some concerns about going all the way up to the property line with, well, taller, taller structures. For example, if a six-foot-high fence going all the way up to the property line, which in effect would be the sidewalk, did we want to modify that to maybe a certain distance up to the, maybe to the edge of the parking lot?
Yes, that was, that was my intent. Thank you.
Okay. And was there a height maximum that, or minimum that you wanted to specify for the final product?
Minimum of four feet.
Minimum of four feet, okay. And we'll go right up to the edge of the, now my, this function isn't working like I should, but we're going to go right up to the edge of this parking lot corner right there with the four-foot-high opaque wall. Okay.
In connection with that, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to verify that the second, second on the motion approves.
Is that included in there, okay. And then, Mr. Barton, you had a clarification that you...
I'm sorry, it was more towards discussion, but...
All right. Well, that's the motion on the floor, then, and any discussion, then? Mr. Barton.
For discussion, I would just indicate that the fact that we kind of postponed this for, I think, six months to allow for a meeting with the condominium association, the fact that the condominium never, association never followed through on that and that they're not here, kind of speaks volume as to, you know, their concern, they're really not that concerned anymore. And I think this is a good compromise, taking into account to some of the issues that have been discussed today.
Any further discussion? Mr. Clark.
Yes, to the authors of the motion, and I know that was clarified as far as the distance from the sidewalk and so forth, was, Mr. Barton, was your initial recommendation to be aligned with trees because you did not want the screening wall and/or fence to go all the way to the sidewalk? Was that your concern? And secondly, why is, why are we seeing a minimum of four feet versus a minimum of six feet, which I believe the ordinance says six? I'm just curious.
I think four feet should be enough. The main concern there is the headlights, and I think four feet at that distance in the parking lot should be enough, and really leaving it to the petitioner, whether the petitioner wants to put up a hedge or a wall, but yes, to the, to the edge of the parking lot there, and then to kind of the front of the building, really.
So your concern, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, your concern was just covering the parking lot, Mr. Barton?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Meaning, you wanted to cover the headlights in the, versus, versus going all the way to the sidewalk?
Yes.
Any of the, at the parking lot versus going all the way, that's the reason?
I think, I think, I think, I think I agree with what you're saying, if I understand what you're saying, asking me. I think I agree with that.
And then, if we could have the motion restated for us before the votes come, I think Mr. Stratt has more discussion.
Mr. Stratt.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be opaque even during the winter, whatever vegetation is actually agreed to, and I guess that's administrative, and that's going to be, I don't know that that has necessarily be in a motion, does it, or...
Well, I did put the opaqueness in the motion, yeah.
You'd want to do that?
I think we should put that.
I think I used the word evergreen or cedar, which...
I put those in the motion, too.
Both of those should be opaque during the winter in Michigan.
Planted close enough that it's going to be, right?
You know, honestly, if, for whatever reason, there's a species out there that's going to fit really well and do the job, and it doesn't meet the definition of evergreen or cedar for some botanical reason, I think, based on the discussion, I understand exactly what we want to try to accomplish here, and staff will be flexible with this to accomplish what the board, if successful, you know, if this is passed, wants to do.
Any further discussion or questions? I have one. Could you show again up on the chart there that where the edge would be for either the wall, or this would be the eastern edge of where the wall would end, or were the evergreen hedgerun?
Yes, if I'll...
Right about there?
My hand tools, yeah, right here at the edge of the paved area.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready for the roll call, unless you want to rest, do you, do the board members want to hear the motion again, just to be on...
I would, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yes, to, to to grant the variance as requested and to require, starting east of the tree described at the meeting and on the overhead here, easterly, an opaque wall or evergreen cedar landscaping hedge, four feet high, to extend easterly to the edge of the parking lot.
Minimum of four feet high.
Minimum of four feet high. Well, yes, and that would be on the north side of the parking lot.
Questions, or are we ready for the roll call on the motion? Mr. Evans, we're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Motion passes. You have your variance request with the conditions on that. Next on the agenda is a variance request from Minalgada and Ashish Manik at 4820 Livernoy. This has come in front of us several times. I want to make sure before we proceed to fire, is the petitioner here for that? Okay.
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Stratt.
I'd like to excuse myself for a conflict of interest.
Okay, all right. Does that require a motion for us to excuse Mr. Stratt, Mrs. Lancaster, or is that just pro forma that he excuses himself?
He should state on the record why he's excusing himself. Mr. Stratt, before you go, do you have a, oh, you said conflict of interest. I'm sorry.
I have possibly a monetary...
Okay. You can't vote to make him stay, so you might as well not vote if he's got a monetary interest.
Mr. Stratt has excused himself from hearing this issue, and so I will turn it over then to staff for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the east side of Livernoy Road, south of Long Lake Road. The subject property and all surrounding property is a single-family residential. The nature of the request is in order to split the subject parcel into three separate parcels, a 15-foot variance to the required 100-foot lot width requirement for two of the proposed parcels. In the overhead, the two southerly proposed parcels are proposed to be 85 feet wide, and the ordinance requires those to be 100 feet wide. The northerly parcel is at least 115 feet wide. The board first heard this matter in March of 2011, and following a public hearing, they postponed the matter one month to allow the applicant to research alternatives. At the applicant's subsequent requests, this matter has been postponed several times since then, and at the board's July meeting, they requested the applicant be present tonight to possibly provide them additional information as to just what direction this request is going.
Any questions from the board for city staff? Mr. Courtney.
Yes, do we have alternate members at this point appointed?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Any further questions? Hey, could the petitioner come forward and give us an update on the situation?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ashish Manik, and I apologize, my wife is not able to make it today, she's out of country. I've been, I've been in touch with Mr. Paul on every monthly basis on how, how we are doing with this, is that, yes, to answer the question, to come up with alternatives for the current plan, yes, we did consult another company, and we did come up with an alternative which requires less than, rather than 15 feet with the new plan, which I have not submitted to Mr. Evans' office as yet, is that it requires a variance of less, less than four feet now on, in its, in its each equal lots. However, there is one more thing that, I have the rough copy of this, if I can submit to the board for us to look at. I would, I would like to submit a more...
I'm sorry.
I have this copy on a much a better format. However, while I was going through this, and which, the, to complete that topic, which we were able to find out is, I did not have an idea, being new to this, is that it, I was, what I was looking at is the front line, but the reason we have this possibility is considering the setback of the, of the, of the building envelope, you know, so that's why this is a possibility out there. The second thing that was, that came into, in, which came to my attention, which I was not aware, is that this property has to dehistoric, has a historic status on it. And before coming, before coming in the month of March, I had been to the historic committee, and they had approved all of this, but they, nobody informed me, and I, maybe I did not ask that question, that can, that this property has to be dehistorized first. And so I, as soon as I came to know, and that was the reason to postpone it after the second month, that, okay, if I informed Paul that, you know, I met with Lauren Campbell at that point of time, and, you know, she said that, okay, it is going to take a 30-day process, and there is one more 30-day process to approve committee and stuff like that. After that talk, she said that she's going to start a process. I submitted a letter, and so far, I have not heard anything. And it so happened that, as of July, the historic commission district is no more employed by city. So she said that it has to be passed to the city clerk. That, that information I came to know two, one and a half or two weeks ago. I went to the city clerk, and she said that she's going to look into it, and I still have no status of mind. And that, there was, it was not any intention of ignorance on my behalf, but it was just that I was waiting on information from the city, and I had not received it, not from Mr. Evans' department, from other departments. So that's the reason we were not here, you know, that, that. And with this, if I can request is that if I can have a modification of the request and submit this new plan before the next meeting, before my next meeting, and, and if you can, I don't know what to do, but if you, if you guys can look at the plan once I submit in the next meeting or so, and give a conditional approval, if possible, that once the, this plan is approved on the basis of dehistoric status and stuff like that. So appreciate your time, and I'm ready for any questions that...
So you'd like us to really to postpone action on this until you can submit a new plan to Mr. Evans' office?
I would request, yes. Is that okay?
Well, let's see what the other board members, Mr. Courtney.
Yes, as, as well as that, I would like to see the historical problem solved before we start dividing up property or even considering it. Because if the historical district is not going to be changed, you're wasting your time and ours both. And I would hate to see us approve something and then have the historic areas not changed or not approved.
Mr. Barton.
I'm sorry, Mr. Courtney or, or Mr. Ashish, Manik, what is the historical...
I don't know, he, this is the first I've heard of it. I never bothered to look at it.
Okay, what is the historical designation? What does it apply to? The, the building, the house, the land?
Well, there's a, it's, they said that this building was built, before they said it was built in 1850, but then they say that records were wrong, and it's built in 1901 right now, as per my lead. And so I have applied for dehistoric status to remove, removed from the property because there is no significance as of what I, I tried to find out in it, but then there is no as much significance as of what I know.
So you're asking the, to the commission for permission to be allowed to destroy the house or demolish the house?
Yes.
Because it's really not an historic, I see.
Yes, yes.
So that, that process you've started, but you don't have a decision yet?
No, I, in fact, no, yeah, I don't even, yeah, I don't have a decision as yet, yes.
I mean, I, I think, I think I agree with Mr. Courtney, that we should kind of postpone this for 60 or 90 days, so that you get these other things taken, taken care of. On the other hand, you might want to consider, just, just from the perspective of a board member, every month, we get, you know, 45 pages of your application, and we have to kind of go through it, so that's why, you know, 60, 90 days going out is a good idea. Alternatively, you know, you might consider just withdrawing this until you get everything taken care of, and then, yes, it would require apparently a filing fee, but...
I, I mean, I, I get being, I mean, I agree on both sides, but however, if I can, if I can request is, let's give it 90 days postponement, because I would like, because I've been approaching this thing for last one and a half year, and, and I went through the process with, working with them for three months, and they did not even inform me once that you have to dehistorize stuff, you know, I mean, so they approved all the plans that I, they did, went through a motion that we approved this modification of the site, but I had no idea that I have to do those. I'm sorry for wasting your time, I mean, wasting, Mr. Courtney's time, but...
Your time, too.
Yeah, but I had no idea about this, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clark.
I would move to postpone this item to the November meeting, and before we move to discussion, I believe perhaps what may happen, if he want, if the petitioner would like to move it up, he could be in contact with Mr. Evans, and Mr. Evans could communicate with us at next month's meeting or the meeting, you know, I guess that would be just, next month's would be the only option to move it up, but I, you know, 90 days would be November, so that's my motion.
Second. Before I, before I see a second, any concerns with that timeframe, Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster?
Well, I don't have any concerns...
Well, I don't have any concerns with that timeframe. But Mr. Clark indicated that if the applicant wanted it earlier than that, he could contact me, and we would advise the board. We couldn't do that. When the board postpones a matter at a public meeting, they've got to postpone it to a date certain. So if it's postponed... if this board wants to postpone it to the November 15th meeting, that's the meeting he's got to go with. And because anyone interested in watching it won't know that he's called me and that I've told the board that we're going to have this on a different agenda. The other comment I have for the applicant is that if you were to choose to go with a variation of this plan that you submitted to us today, you would have to reapply because right now, the way the variance has been advertised and published indicates that only two of the three parcels will be under the 100-foot-wide minimum. So we would have to republish and renotice if you were to go and proceed with this. We could not simply do this on November 15th or at a future date unless you reapply. I just wanted you to know that.
So because, see, again, I was not aware about this. But what I can ask is that... Because board requested it for me to go ahead and see some alternatives. And so even though if that's the case, then I have to... then we have to do what we have to do, right? And if you had to go ahead and reapply it, that means I have to go through the fees process again and pay additional fees. Is that right?
Well, you'd pay the application fee, but the important thing for the public is that new postcards and a newspaper ad would say, instead of having two parcels that are 85 feet wide, you're proposing three parcels that are 98.22 or 23 feet wide. It's a different request, and we're obligated to the public to let them know through that process in the way the postcards get mailed out and the newspaper ad goes in the papers when you apply.
I was just with the economy around, and I was trying to see if I can... Okay, I mean, whatever we have to do.
Just wanted you to know.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So do I understand that I have to reapply? Is that right?
If what you propose tonight is eventually what you're going to want, you are going to have to reapply.
Okay.
You could not do it under this...
So then we have a time period within this 90 days that I can come and talk to you about and...
Oh, yeah, if you wanted it... As a matter of fact, my next available meeting, which is... Yeah, there's plenty of opportunities to even put it on a hearing before the November meeting. If you wanted to submit by August 24th, we could put you on the September meeting.
No, I think November would be better because I'm still trying to figure it out where the city is and, you know.
Mr. Evans, wouldn't it be better then for the applicant maybe to withdraw his application? Or would that be the best way to proceed?
That might be the cleanest way.
Okay.
And then come back after everything is ready?
Because you may find, maybe you'll be ready next month, or it could be the way the bureaucratic process goes, it could be a year before now before you get that application approved from whoever handling the historic designation. So would you prefer then to withdraw your application for this variance request?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the appropriate thing then is for us to vote to accept? Or is it we just say it's a clean slate now?
You don't have to propose to accept it. In fact, if you want to give him time to think about it, you can make your motion to adjourn. He can tell Paul he's withdrawing, and that way it will just be taken off your agenda.
Okay. So just move on and then take this off the... We just don't want to deal with it tonight then?
I would suggest you postpone it as you planned, and then that gives him time to withdraw it in case he wants to change his mind and go back to the first proposal. And that way, if he withdraws, which it looks like with the new plans he would have to, it would just come off your next agenda.
Okay. All right, well, then we have a motion for Mr. Clark to postpone action until our November meeting. And I think Mr. Bartnik was seconding it, if I'm still correct. Any discussion of questions from board members on that motion to postpone action? Seeing none, we will go for a roll call on the motion to postpone action until our November meeting. Mr. Evans?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt? Pardon me. Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes. The motion's been made and approved to postpone action on this until the November meeting, so you have the option until then to... If you'd like to withdraw this, you can, and then you might want to talk to Mr. Evans as soon as possible to figure out what direction you want to go on this.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And if you see Mr. Stratt out there telling me he can come back in, too, if you see him, don't worry about it, so... Okay.
Yeah, we probably ought to wait till Mr. Stratt does come in, and if I need to bring him in, I will, just before I start with the next...
Does anyone want to take a short recess while we try to find him? Why don't we take like a five-minute recess and then...
Mr. Lambert, Mr. Chairman? I can see that he's sitting in the lobby, so...
Well, I think he's... He should be in then, unless somebody really wants to take a break, so... I think...
Mr. Chairman, he's coming.
Okay, good, all right. All right, next item on the agenda then.
Sure, if you like.
Hello there. And but the record show that Mr. Stratt is returning to his position after excusing himself. The next item on the agenda is a post... another postponed item, a variance request from Aida in Samad Hermes at 6763 Donaldson Road. And Mr. Evans, do you have some information you'd like to share with us?
Yes, I do, just briefly to explain the request. The subject property is located in a neighborhood south of South Boulevard and east of Livernoy Road in a single-family residential district. The subject property and all surrounding property is a zoned, single-family residential. And the subject matter involves adding on accessory floor area to the existing garage. What they want to do is add a covered driveway and an additional proposed garage to the existing attached accessory garage. Now, the ordinance requires that these additions not exceed 75% of the first-floor living space of the house, different than when the public hearing notice was sent out. There's a typographical error in the applicant's request. Essentially, when you crunch the numbers, what they're doing is they're proposing, if they're successful here tonight with the existing garage plus the additional structures, they're going to have 2,978 square feet of accessory floor area attached to that house. Now, 75% of the ground floor area of the house is 1,952 square feet. So in order to build what they want, they need a variance of 1,026 square feet, which is less than the advertised 1,685-square-foot variance that they needed. Now, last month, the board held a public hearing on this matter, and the board postponed that to allow the applicants additional time to establish a practical difficulty. They have submitted written correspondence to explain their practical difficulty relative to the requirements of our zoning ordinance, and the board has received that. And so they're here for your consideration on this matter.
Any questions from the board for city staff? Seeing none, we'll ask the applicants to come up and maybe give us some more information on the letter that you have here for us and answer any questions from the board.
Good evening. I think you've seen our letter. I don't know if I need to go through it point by point. I hope you've had a chance to read it, but I just want to summarize if that's okay, or maybe I shouldn't.
Go ahead and summarize.
And I hope at the end, the board will be sympathetic to our view that our plan really meets the spirit of the ordinance and hopefully grant our request for variance. There are five points in the ordinance about... Well, it's called on practical difficulties or concerns like that. I don't know that difficulty is the right word that we want to use, but the exceptional characteristics of the property are... It's a large lot. It's 167 feet wide. It can easily accommodate the proposed addition and the square footage. And we wouldn't need this variance if we located a garage building in the back of the lot behind the house. But our problem with that is it would not be... It would not serve as a garage for cars. We want cars to be located close to the house, to the entrance, to go in and out, be protected from the weather. And our lot looks on... There's natural woods in the back and the side and a meadow-like appearance, a lot of grass. We don't want to put a building in the middle of it. We'd rather have it along the side of the house and serve as an attached garage. Further out in the back, it just wouldn't be a garage. It would be a barn or a storage building, and we want a garage. The ordinance says... I mean, I'm just going to go through the points. It should be related to the premises. I think this is something that is fitting, well-fitting with our premises, well-fitting with our street. We're not asking for it because somebody else has a request. It's just for us. And we... and as far as, you know, the request not being of a personal nature or an arbitrary, this isn't just, you know, just because we feel like it. We have a need for the parking, and it enhances the house, so we do want it. It's not just some wound that we thought of. As far as meeting the condition that the history of the property there... I mean, it's not a self-inflicted difficulty through previous variances or something like that. As far as I know, we've never requested a variance. There hasn't been a variance with the previous owner. I don't think there's ever been a variance on it, at least for 45 years. And the point... the further point that the variance shall not be harmful, I hope, again, the board will agree with us that the proposed structure is an enhancement. And every... I mean, other people who have seen it, neighbors, even one that was... Has the impression that we were building an actually 3,000-square-foot building. We're not. We're really... even that person came of his own accord to tell me that he was now... Changed his mind. He's in favor of it. And I think the person was gracious enough to write a letter to the board about that. The point of the variance will be minimum necessary. You know, this building, the garage, the enclosed garage part, would be well within the square footage, and we wouldn't need a variance. The square footage becomes enlarged because the driveway that we need to maneuver the cars, and we want to cover it to make it attached, that is causing the overage and requiring the variance. So we really... I mean, it is a minimum. It sounds a lot, but it's really the minimum. And the reason why the square footage sounds like it's a lot is because, I don't know, we really didn't know this, and even our neighbors didn't know, but the covered part of the driveway is counting in the square footage. The... So we're really asking for what we consider the minimum. And actually, we do have the plan in the future to convert... If we succeed in getting a variance and building this additional parking space, then we want to convert our existing garage into living space for mudroom, laundry room, and closet or storage space, which would be enabled if we can get this variance and build our attached garage off to the side. That will free our current smaller garage. I don't know if Aida wants to add something?
No, I think that's it. You didn't mention... I mean, it's here, like, our driveway is already 90 feet.
Oh, yeah.
If we build it in the back, all the way behind the house, so that's... we have to add another 73 feet to the driveway. So we have... we will have about 160-foot of driveway to get to the garage. And so it will be in the back. On top of blocking the view of the trees and the meadows, we will have this long driveway going in the back.
Yeah, I mean, to put it in the cast of the practical difficulty, which it really is, the house is already set back 90 feet. I don't know if the ordinance had in mind houses with a closer-in setback, so then... But I mean, by... with this... with the requirement of putting it further in the back, it would be further back from the street than quite a few, like, total lots in Troy. So we're thinking... we're hoping that the board will, like I said, be sympathetic to that this lot can accommodate this building. And it really... It really is not going to be the kind of, like, commercial-looking garage shop or a monster garage or anything like that. That was the... we think was the purpose and the spirit of the ordinance.
And most houses in our neighborhood is like 40-foot setback. And I mean, at the end of this project, we will still end up with like... We will end up with five-car garages without to have an attached garage. We could have made this attached to the existing garage with five doors, like, five garages or five... Three doors facing the street. But that would really look like a monastery garage. And this is, I think, something the ordinance was put to prevent something, you know, that look. So we tried to make this attachment at the best possible way that would look for people looking at the house from the street and for us. And I hope you can see that, too.
Thank you. Mr. Stratt?
Yeah. I see you were well-coached by, I guess, staff. Compliment the staff.
Well, I do want to be... I really want to express our gratitude.
Did a very nice job. Don't over-sell. Whatever you do, right now, you're okay. This is another example of the ordinance. We're trying to... We wanted to eliminate the monster garage possibility. You can't possibly legislate every possible condition. I compliment you. I compliment the staff on this letter. Very well done. To the point. Don't over-sell.
But can I still express one gratitude? It will take only a minute. No, that we were able to see the comments of the attorney, which helped us understand really what...
Staff did an excellent job. I mean, we need more of this.
Any more questions? Mr. Neal?
You may have mentioned this, sir, and I apologize if I'm asking what you've already maybe mentioned, but under practical difficulty of just living in the Midwest with winter, are you also... are you saying that had ended up with a driveway also of 160-odd feet roughly with a garage behind the house, that the snow removal prospects of it being able to use the garage becomes difficult? I don't want to put you in your mouth, but is that part of it?
Well, I didn't say it in those words, but yes, definitely, that's why we want... We don't want it to be in the back.
Well, the reason I ask is I remember last month, I believe you said at one time, you wanted the carport in part because of it was weather-conditioned, snow and whatnot. And it's with that in mind that, you know, you made me want to inquire about that. But reading between the lines a little bit, I kind of put that together, but I wanted to ask that.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, have a seat, and then we'll open up the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And I don't believe we received any more correspondence since our last meeting that's in our board packet.
That is correct.
And is any more questions from the board or someone want to offer a resolution? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to grant the variance requested, making the preliminary findings that the variance will not be contrary to... The variance is proposed is not going to be, especially as amended with the, what I understand, are reduced numbers. Not contrary to the public interest, it will not permit the establishment of a prohibited use. It does not cause any adverse effect to the properties in the immediate vicinity or zoning district, and it relates only to the property described in the application for the variance. And with regard to the special findings, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve practical difficulties within the meaning of the article as shown by substantial evidence in the record, including specifically as outlined in the letter, referencing Section 15.04E, Parts 2A, 2B, 2C, 2C, 2D, E. letter referencing Section 15.04E, Parts 2A, 2B, 2C, 2C, 2D, E, and E3 and E4, that there is substantial evidence that supports the variance.
Before I take a second, I want to make sure that if we need to include anything in the motion that would indicate that the covered driveway would not be enclosed and creating essentially another, what would truly be a monster garage.
Well, certainly, the plans on file that you've received clearly demonstrate that that won't be covered, but that can be included in the, actually, the fact that you mentioned it here, it's on the record as well.
I think that should be included.
Okay, that should be included. Then, Mr. Stratt, I believe, seconds that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Evans, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Motion passes. You have your variance.
Mr. Stratt, you seconded that motion, correct?
Yes, he did.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item we have as far as a request is concerned is a hearing of a case, a variance request from Angelina Besnick-Goschka at 2420 West Square Lake Road. And once again, I'll apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. And this is to allow a 10 adult foster square residence, a 27-foot, 27-square-foot variance to the requirement that the land parcel be at least 40,000 square feet in area. Adult foster care, small group homes are required to have at least 4,000 square feet of lot area per adult, excluding employees and their caregivers, and the subject property measures 39,973 square feet. Mr. Evans, if you could present the information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located in a single-family residential district north of Square Lake Road, west of Coolidge Highway, specifically at the corner of Square, Square Lake and Glenborn. The subject property and all surrounding property is owned, single-family residential. In June 2011, the applicant received approval from the Planning Commission to conduct an adult foster care home on this property with nine residents. The ordinance requires that parcel of land be at least 40,000 square feet in, excuse me, have at least 4,000 square feet of lot area per adult. They've returned back to the Planning Commission this month to request approval for 10 foster care residents instead of nine, but because they have less than 40,000 square feet in area, this board has to grant a variance for them to be able to proceed with the Planning Commission. So they need a 27-square-foot variance to the lot area in order to proceed with their request to have 10 adult foster care residents as opposed to nine, which they're approved for right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions from the board? Mr. Bartnik.
If, if you could clarify, is it, just a few items. Are the numbers correct that it's, well, first of all, is it correct that the sequence of events, is that a permit was issued and that they were allowed and actually did construct the addition to the building? Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and so then, the next sequence of events is they, they've asked the Planning Commission for, allow for 10 residents as a, is the terminology adult foster care now? Or what is the?
Yeah, adult foster care residents, yeah.
So the Planning Commission's action is kind of dependent upon, under the procedure that we've established about six months or a year ago, they come to us for any zoning variances before it goes back.
Right, exactly. They received approval for nine, and now they, they, they would prefer to have 10, but they don't, they're deficient 27 square feet, so they have to get the variance from you before they can get the approval from the Planning Commission.
Okay, and then, have you done, so the calc, that was my next question, the calculation is 27 square feet, and then in the, in the July 11, the 2011 report from Horizon Engineers, does that come out to one and a half inches of the adjacent property line?
I don't know if staff verified it to that extent, but certainly he can attest, being the engineering firm who oversaw the surveyors and so forth, exactly what that might be.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll invite, oh, oh, Mr. Courtney?
Just one. The, has the state approved anything on this at this point?
I believe they're already operating. As a matter of fact, I think they are operating even before, they came before the Planning Commission previously. Perhaps that's going to be more accurately answered by the applicant.
Thank you. Could the petitioners come forward and sign in on the clipboard and present the information?
My name is Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering, assisting the owners, Angelina and Besnick-Goschka. I'll, I'll touch on answering some of the questions that, that came up. First, I wanted a clarification on Mr. Bartnik's comment regarding the addition. There was actually no addition, per se, put onto the existing structure. This structure did not expand at all whatsoever from the exterior walls outward. Actually, what occurred was there was a two-car garage with a front-entry garage right where the driveway ends. That garage was converted to two bedrooms and a, and a bathroom to support additional occupants. This facility has been operating actually as an adult foster care home, family home, for about five, roughly five to six years. Under the definition, they're allowed between one and six adults to be cared for, and that's a primary use allowed under the zoning ordinance. It doesn't require any type of site plan approval. It's, it's a primary use that's allowed pending licensing from the state. So that's, that's been in use and operating under that designation for about five or six years. The, there was a little, something, there was a little bit of miscommunication, I believe, between the owners and the contractors that performed the work. When they hired the contractors to actually do the construction work, to convert, to do the conversion, it was the owner's understanding that not only would they obtain the permits, but any sort of approvals that would go along with that, including site plan approvals. Well, that's, unfortunately, the site plan approval was left out. They did obtain the building permit. The inspections went through. They applied to the state to increase their license and change the designation of the use from a family home to a small group home, and the state allowed that pending final certificate of occupancy from the city. When they applied for the final C O from the city and the inspector looked at the site, it was determined that while everything is in place, they never received site plan approval for the change in use. So that's where I came in to apply, to apply for the special use approval. So that, that gives you a little bit of a history on, on the use. A clarification on the, the numbers, the 10 versus the nine, it was always their intent to obtain 10 occupants. When they originally, and this gets into the, the nature of the variance request, when they first entertained, before they even started doing the work, obviously, they needed to determine what are they doing this for. They, they need to determine what type of occupancy there would be allowed under the state rules and under the city rules. You know, you generally think the state would have, be more restrictive in their requirements. In this case, they are actually not. The state calculates the, the occupancy based on the square footage of the bedrooms, usable square footage of the bedrooms. So when you do that calculation, you end up with 13, this, this house could accommodate 13 adults, but by definition of the way the state defines the, the, the group home, it would be limited to maximum of 12. So by the state's rules, this, this facility could operate with 12 adults. The, the city of Troy, as Mr. Evans mentioned, is, they base the occupancy on the square footage of the property. So in that respect, it's more restrictive in this case. The, the Goicas then said, okay, well, what is the size of our property? Went to the city, they obtained a copy of the recorded plat, which was plotted in 1955. They went, got a copy of the assessing records. All that information, and if you were even to go further and look at what information's available on the county records, county assessing, everything available to them said 200 by 200. Simple math yields 40,000 square feet divided by 4,000 is 10 adults. So from day one, it was their intent to have 10 adults. It was submitted for the special use approval. Unfortunately, we found out a day or so before the initial planning commission meeting that they were only going to get approved for the nine. And basically, what, that determination was based on the survey. As a part of the site plan, or the site plan slash special use approval, not only is the site plan required and any applicable other drawings, floor plan elevations, application fees, you have to have a survey. And in most cases, that's a perfectly reasonable requirement if you are expanding a facility, any additional paving, anything that affects your vehicular, pedestrian circulation, setbacks, screening, all those issues, perfectly valid requirement in most cases. In this case, the survey was basically meaningless. The, again, they did not expand the facility horizontally, vertically. Everything that physically occurred in the structure was in the interior. So we really could have prepared this site plan based off of the existing plat, off of field, whatever information's available to us short of an actual survey, which would have been 40,000 square feet, would have been 10 people, assuming that, having, having gone through the same procedure, we would assume that we would be approved for 10 adults and we wouldn't be here tonight. Unfortunately, however, because the survey yielded a square footage that was 27 square feet short of the 40,000 square feet, when you do the, the math, it ended up being, I believe it was 9.993 adults. Normally, you would round up, I mean, typical mathematics, however, it's a common planning practice in that case, whether it's an occupancy or a density, you typically round down. Well, we found that out a day or so before the meeting. We went forward to go ahead and get the approval for the nine so they could at least continue working on whatever they needed to do to finalize and wrap things up with their facility. On the survey, and I'm not a surveyor, but we've been doing this long enough, so I understand how that, how that works in the field. 99 times out of 100, when we have surveys done on properties, they always come back with a record and measured situation, not only on the lot line bearings, but also the distances, and this is no exception. Fortunately, in, in their case, or unfortunately, as it is, when they, we went to do the survey, we found all four corners, and that's not always the case. Sometimes in these older subdivisions or acreage parcels, there could be one corner, three corners, all corners missing. We have to determine where those go. In this case, there were survey irons there with caps, so at some point between 1955 and today, somebody was out there surveying. For who and for what purpose, we don't know. But we were not in the position to say that those corners are wrong and adjust them to make this property 40,000 square feet or a hair over or any, we honored those corners, and it's a record measured situation, happens all the time. Usually, it's, never has an impact on what we're doing unless you're building on a 40-foot wide lot in Birmingham, and it ends up being 39.75 feet wide. That makes the difference in the world in Birmingham, but, for example, that's just an example, but, so it usually doesn't make, but here, because this request is based on, or the occupancy is based on square footage, every square foot counts. And we actually looked at an alternative, you know, as opposed to coming to the Z B A, how, how can we increase our, our lot area? We actually spoke to the neighbor to the west, and he was actually agreeable to it, but as the thought process went on further, bottom line is he has a mortgage on his home, so you throw the bank into the mix and then you might as well forget about it because you do a new survey, split and combination, new tax ID numbers, it, it, too much of a hassle for, for that much property. So our only option then was to come to the Z B A. So that's kind of the whole synopsis in a nutshell. I think my letter may go into a little bit more detail on some other items, but certainly I would be happy to go into any further detail or answer any, any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Bartnik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Robinson, the, actually, the, the survey was up there a moment ago. Well, there, okay, that, that's-
That's just in a large version.
Okay, so the, the north side came, first of all, I want to compliment you and the petitioner for maintaining the integrity of the survey process and of the entire legal process. You're to be complimented and your client is to be complimented for that, because it does appear to be a minor distinction in the field. Somebody with less char, less character and integrity would have just gone over that. And so, on my behalf, I want to compliment you for that. But then, looking at the photograph, or the drawing, the north line is, comes in at 200 feet and the west line comes in at 200 feet. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct. Actually, the west line comes in about an inch longer than 200 feet, 200.7 measured.
All right, so it would-
200.7.
All right. Okay, thank you. That makes it better than, so it's the southeast post or iron which is off a little bit? Is that a fair?
You know, it, honestly, it could be any or all four of those irons. There's, if you look at it, the westerly line is, it turned out to be about approximately an inch longer. The southerly line ended up being about three inches shorter. The easterly line, which is along Glenborn, is about three-quarters of an inch shorter. So it could be, without going out there and resurveying that entire section of the neighborhood, who's, who's going to be short of property? How, how do you reallocate the land? Those irons could be in the wrong spot.
Right.
They could be in the wrong spot, but because of the, that the irons were there and there were caps and that they weren't physically damaged or, or bent, and it fit reasonably well, as long as it's within a couple, and, and they don't just take those four irons into account, they check other irons in the area. But is the error in, it could be in Square Lake, it could be in Glenborn, it could be the other irons, without resurveying that whole section of the plat, there's no way to know for certain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, you should go have a seat. We will open the public hearing unless, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board, and I don't believe we have any correspondence from affected nearby residents, so.
That is correct.
Any questions from the board or anyone want to offer a motion? Mr. Bartnik.
I guess I have a question for, for the, the city attorney or the zoning and compliance specialist. Which motion language is suggested for this, this is a use variance?
No, it's an area variance.
Oh, it is a, an area of-
Yep, 27-square-foot variance to the parcel size of the land.
Okay, it was a special request, use, special use request to the plan, the planning department, but for us, it's a standard dimensional.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Anyone want to offer a resolution? Mr. Bartnik, you have a look on your face like you're ready to offer something.
I, I would move to approve the variance. This, the variance, it's a dimensional variance, very minor in percentage, and that make the preliminary findings that it is not contrary to the public interest, it does not permit the establishment of a prohibited use, does not cause an adverse effect on the properties, and it relates only to this property. And with regard to the special findings, where a literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would involve practical difficulties within the meaning of the article, I would indicate there is substantial evidence in the written record that's already been submitted, as well as in the presentation today, that, that standard has been met.
Mr. Ray, second to the motion.
My second.
Mr. Neal seconds the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Courtney?
Yeah, just one. The state, under the state regulations, you could get 12 in there, is that correct? Any number that they get are reported to, to the city, aren't they? If they have 10 residents or if they have 12, do we get a report?
I'm not aware that we get a report. I don't think so.
Okay. So how do we assure that they operate with?
Well, essentially, their request is to have 10. The Planning Commission's going to act on their request to have 10, so you've got, you know, two approvals that say you have to have 10. If they go over 10, they're violating potentially a couple of things.
Is the state license specify the actual number? In other words, would the state license specify 10, not 12?
Be sure to sign in there, too.
Of course, that problem exists now that I'm creating, as if they had ten instead of nine, we wouldn't know the difference anymore. Forget it, I just convinced myself it's irrelevant.
By the state, they, based on the Troy City decision, they can go more than ten. Let's say City said ten, the inspector comes in, how much is from the City? Ten. We stay ten. So even the range is six to twelve, that doesn't mean we can get twelve. We can stop in ten because the City criteria is four thousand for residents, which is outside lot size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, also, if I could answer some, or to explain to Mr. Courtney that occasionally we do get calls from neighbors, we're allowed to investigate, and, or we did get calls from disgruntled parents of clients who are there, so sometimes we do learn about it. And the state, we can follow violation with the state, we can also take them to court on a violation of our ordinance, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Burnick.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Motion passes, you have your variance. Okay, next on the agenda, I believe we have any communications, you know, other than the ones that are already listed later on the agenda, there's no further communications to bring to us. Secondly, our next after communications, public comment, no one is here from the public, so we can pass on to miscellaneous business. The first item is that the draft rules of procedure. Mr. Evans or Ms. Lancaster, one of you want to explain to us how we see these proposed rules in front of us?
Well, essentially, we went out and got the comments of the board members and staff, and then we forwarded that information to the city attorney's office, where they collated those and also looked at it through, do what city attorneys do, and added whatever legal information they need to provide. And this is the final copy directly from the city attorney's office, and I guess at this point, you know, we can, we can act on it tonight. If the board as a whole is, doesn't have a lot of changes, I would have to say if there's more changes, we can either discuss those changes, if there's even more proposed changes, we have the option of putting this matter off till next month. So really, we can, we've got a lot of flexibility to what we can do here, so maybe, maybe the first thing would be is to kind of get an idea of who has changed and if so, what are they, and take it from there.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes, we have a lot of things in here that are required by state law or by ordinance that really aren't required in here. I don't know if we want them in there just to make an easier spot to see this stuff or if we want to get rid of anything that we don't need.
Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you. I took a look at it, too, and I was kind of going to compliment the staff for taking out the stuff that would just kind of be duplicative. And really, I thought they did a good job of taking the stuff out that wasn't necessary, that's covered somewhere else.
There's still a lot in here, though, that's not, not absolutely required.
Oh, I see.
Because we have ordinances in state law that, like, meetings are open to the public, state law. But sometimes you might want these things in here just-
As a reminder.
Yeah.
As a summary, yeah.
And I'm just wondering, personally, I would just as soon see all of the stuff taken out as much as possible, but if everyone else thinks it would be better to leave it in.
I think the way it is right now looks good, kind of a balance of stuff that can, needs to be in and stuff that doesn't need to be in.
Okay, then I have one other question, then, basically, is, do we plan to use Robert's Rules? And I don't think anything in the ordinance requires us to, so should we put that in That Robert's Rules accept where, you know, changed by state law or by ordinance?
You can put in here that you want to use Robert's Rules of Orders if you want. Those are extremely complicated rules, so basically, my, when I work on boards, I always say, we use a modified version of Robert's Rules, and as long as you are consistent in your motions and you give due process, you're okay. So it's up to you if you want to use Robert's Rules and be a little bit more formal, but sometimes they're very complicated.
No, I think, I think you might be, maybe better off that way. Plus, we have the right to change rules anyway, so it's-
You can vote later on if you-
And the chairman has the right to rule on the rules as we go, so.
It is true that, believe it or not, I've been an attorney for thirty years and I have never seen a lawsuit where someone sued because of a violation of Robert's Rules of Order. So that's a good thing, I'm sure the courts would not want to see that.
Mr. Neal.
Ms. Lancaster, when you apply that term modified, do you mean the tone is set by the chairman or chairperson?
Not necessarily. The chairperson has a lot to do with the flow of a meeting, but when Paul and I are here, we watch for consistency in your motions, we watch that the citizens are what, that there could be no due process violations, that your motions are pretty much made the same way every time, and so it's, it's controlled by the board. I mean, you could set up your own rules for how you want to do motions, but Robert's Rules gives you a very good, basic outline, but if, those of you I know have studied Robert's Rules, you know they can get really confusing and very intense on things that we don't even deal with. So that's why I call it modified. We basically use Robert's Rules, the simple motions as our structure, and monitor it for any violations that we think might be, and let you know if we think there's maybe a due process, like the postcard notice that Paul mentioned tonight where there was, he's changing his request to three parcels instead of two, that's a due process violation, so.
Mr. Bartnik, you have a question?
I was just going to supplement what Ms. Lancaster said, and that is, you know, I would kind of be against specifically referring to Robert's Rules of Order in the bylaws. I think they, when necessary, they can be used by the member, a member or by the board or by the chairperson, as persuasive authority to kind of be a guideline, but I think, you know, the hallmarks are what Ms. Lancaster said, which is due process and the notice and the procedure that the public is aware of and kind of consistency. I mean, we used Robert's Rules of Order before, a few months ago. We, it came up, it was good to use, it was persuasive, et cetera, but to put that in the, bylaws, I think would be a bad idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Courtney?
I have a number of minor things, like Article Two, Section Two says the board shall by majority vote. We could just say board may designate, not use by majority vote. It is by majority vote. The next one down, where it says the board can change the date and time of regular meetings, you don't need to say as set forth in the previous section. There's a number of places where we mention votes of the entire board. I don't think we need the entire membership, it's just vote of the board.
Are you looking at, which page are you looking at?
Well, if you were on, the first one was Section, Article Two, Section Two, where it says the board shall, I think it just, the board may. The third, end at regular meetings, you don't need a set forth in Article Two. Other spots are the affirmative vote of two-thirds of, on Number Six, two-thirds of the entire membership, I don't think you need the word entire membership.
Quorum is better? Is it termed quorum then?
No, in this case, it is the membership, but I don't think you need to say entire membership, it's just two-thirds of the board. It does specify five members, which is fine. And we, we use, well, one that I had a question on, Article Four, Section Two, the applicant may withdraw at the appeal at any time prior to the final action of the board. That would mean that we could stand up here and start to vote no, and a guy could say, I withdraw. And I don't think he should, I don't think he has that right. So I think, I think it should be, the applicant may request to withdraw, but I don't know if the ordinance specifies something else, I didn't get a chance to look that up. If the ordinance doesn't say that he has the right to withdraw, I think we should have may request to withdraw.
Would you want to, if that happened, would you force someone to go through a vote if they're just going to withdraw their, because they can't bring it again under the way the ordinance is written, unless there's a substantial change.
He can withchange.
Right, he can withchange, but I'm not sure what we would accomplish by, I mean-
If he's, if we're here to vote and we're starting to vote and he decides to withdraw-
And he sees the writing on the wall and he says a-
He says, oh, I want to withdraw. I don't want him to have that right after we've gone through the hearing.
Of course, generally, I would assume whoever's chair in the meeting would probably not recognize that individual's request for withdrawal if the board is voting, I would assume.
It would be on board.
Otherwise, that chairman might get kicked out of office by the other board members.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't even think he should have the right, if we're here having the hearing, I don't, I think he should have the right to request, but not to-
Well, this might be something that would, we would consider under our modified rules of Robert's, or rules of order, that, you know, once you've closed the public hearing, he can't withdraw his request. He, you've, that's out of order for what this board is doing, but we can write it that way if you want, that he would, that he can request and then it's up to the board to decide.
That is what we had been doing in the past, it's been a request to withdraw.
Does that happen very often, where they request before the vote to withdraw?
Usually before the meeting, or at the front end of the meeting. They, they used to start off, they would request, and we would vote on whether they could withdraw or not.
Okay. Well, it's up to the board, I mean, neither of the rules.
Although I see are possibly just may withdraw prior to the public hearing. If you want to have the applicant have the right, then at least it should be limited to prior to the public hearing.
Sounds good. I don't know, we were, oh, I'm sorry.
Or at least think about it, one way or the other.
Mr. Neal, did you have?
I would, I would just say that it would seem to me, well, my opinion is proper, that if an applicant, applicant wants to pull back their, their application and they can get recognized by the chairperson and allowed to speak, you know, you're right, and if right, and literally in the middle of a vote, well, I think it's controlled because the applicant won't have the floor and probably won't be recognized, but I don't know, I guess if we spend fifteen, twenty minutes on something and we're about two-thirds through or whatever, and the applicant at that point just wants to say, look, I just want to pull this, I don't know how we can really prevent him or her from doing it. I think they still have that right, so I would, I would be comfortable leaving it the way it is because one aspect to your example is, I don't think the party would be recognized to be able to do that. I think the public record would still get created saying, you know, we voted no or, or whatnot. I mean, it's just my opinion.
I think if you have it as a request, you still have the right then to let him withdraw.
I would, uh-
But once we've, once we've debated an item for an hour, I don't think he should have the right then to withdraw it at that point.
Well, I guess the, the basis of my opinion is, in working with some other public activities where someone is seeking, let's say, tax increment financing, I've seen developers do that, they can see where it's going, and we can't really stop them, or at least in those functions, and, and, you know, everybody may understand what's happening, is he hasn't got a chance in heck, you know, and he just wants to leave, maybe he's going to come back later once he realizes what he's got to change, but, you know, using that as my example, I've never, I'm not sure how we can prevent the person from, from pulling it back. I guess it'd be, Ms. Lancaster, I guess I'd leave it up to you in a legal sense, isn't that their right?
Well, that's, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, you know, think, rethinking this and thinking of this as someone making, putting that in our rules and then having it reviewed by an appellate court, I'm not sure the courts would be so pleased with us if we didn't, because that's actually due process to the petitioner, that if all of a sudden he says, wait, I've really screwed this request up, I'm going to withdraw it, what results is the same as a negative vote, it's just that now he has to refile a new application with a new fee, and I'm not so sure a court would look favorably upon us making someone go through with their application. So I think it might be better just to not state it that way.
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is, yeah.
Mr. Courtney, do you have some more suggested changes?
No, that, other than, other things in there that might, no, I think, I think the rest of my problems have been taken care of already.
Okay. Any other board members have items that they'd like to change in the proposed rules? Mr. Barton, did you have something or not?
Just to follow up, looking at Page Two, which is Article Two, Paragraph Six, use variance shall require, right now it says use variances shall require an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the entire membership of the board, five members for approval. Mr. Courtney, I actually think that including the words of the entire membership kind of just does help that, understanding of that paragraph. I'm not certain why you were-
Okay, I think it, I think it throws in an additional confusion, because the entire membership is no longer going to be seven, it's going to be nine.
If you count alternates, I see.
And there can be, it does say five votes, and I think if you say of the board, without the entire membership, you're there.
And you're, you're keeping the number of five members?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so you're just proposing to take out the words the entire membership?
Right.
I see, okay.
Now, even leaving the five in may be a problem if we get to a point where there are six members and no alternates because they haven't been appointed. That can leave, that can lead a problem. But I think the likelihood of that happening is not, is not that great, and if it is, then we can worry about taking out, changing the rule when we see the problem. If you follow me.
I, I agree with you, taking out the words the entire membership.
Yeah.
Now, once you've explained-
But I think leaving the five in there is, just clarifies it a little bit better.
I, I think you have to leave the five members in there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other suggested changes in the rules? Yes, Mr. Neal?
Not a change, but I, I came to this conclusion when I, when I, when I read through the package that was sent to us, well, skimmed it, I didn't read it by, for a word. I, I view these documents as reference documents, and I know that there definitely is items in there that's repetitive, but I'm also looking at it from the perspective of some of the documents that professionally I write, such as specification documents and whatnot, and there's a lot of repetitive stuff in that. And I know, for example, and I think one of the examples used here is about comments about the Open Meeting Act, that's true, but I think a lot of that repetitive language, while it makes it difficult to read sometimes, for the most part, you're not really reading it, but you're actually consulting the document to look at a particular section. With that being the case, I think that extra language in there makes the, the ordinance more of a self-standing document that gives you that reference material to answer questions you might have. So I think even though there are some items in here that could be cleared up, I'm actually rather comfortable just with the way it is now. And I'm not mentioning anything about the discussion we just had about entire membership, but I think some of the items, that's, yes, given, I think to somebody who's using as a reference source who's not that familiar with it, I think having that extra detail in there is useful.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was asking about, like, all- Yeah. Well, that's what I was asking about, like, all, all the meetings are open to the public and that type of thing.
But that should be a given, but somebody, somebody else may, may need, may need to have that information. So that's, that's my opinion.
Well, if there's no one else with contrary opinions or that, I would move...
I do, I do have, or my things. I wanted to give everyone else a chance first to see if they had anything. Anybody else have any suggested changes? Mine are pretty minor. It's on page one, under Article One, Section Two, where it talks about the presiding officer shall decide all points of order of procedure. Normally, under parliamentary procedure, the board has the ability to overrule the decision of the chair. Do we, should we, or do we need to specify that board has that power to overrule the chair on a decision of procedure?
That would be up to the board. If, if you want the chair to make those decisions, then we'll stick with what we've got. And if not, we can write it up then.
Mr. Courtney?
If the board really wanted to do that, they have the right to change the rule and then go back and do it.
Okay.
I think, I think it's fine the way it reads. I would just assume the chairman do the ruling, and if everybody gets mad at them, they can change the rule.
And overthrowing.
Right.
Okay, on, on page two, at the top, number seven, it says, it gives the board, it gives the chairperson the ability to appoint one of the alternates to the, if there's a vacancy either due to an absence or somebody having a conflict of interest. Do we want to give, I assume it's probably going to be pretty much, what we'll do is probably alternate it back and forth. One month it'll be one alternate or the other, the next month. But do we want to have the board approve that appointment by the chair, or are we comfortable giving the chair that power?
The ordinance says the chair has the power.
Okay.
So how the chair wants to operate, if I were the chairman, I would probably operate with Mr. Evans making sure which guy came in.
Okay.
It's kind of a housekeeping issue. It's more of a housekeeping issue and who's going to sit, you know, who are you going to plug in if somebody's gone?
Okay. Let's see. Oh, this next one is number eight, where it talks about, and this may be a clarification language. It says, alternate members who serve and who participate in any agenda item shall continue to serve on the ZBA for that item until a final decision is reached on the same. I was wondering if we need to add clarifying language that would say something along the lines of, or until the adjournment of that meeting, whichever occurs first. My concern was if we postpone an item that an alternate has voted on, does that mean three months later, when the item comes back, does that alternate then have to take this position of the board member whose position they were taking that evening? Or do we want to say that alternate's job is finished that evening?
I think the better policy is, because you hear so much, just tonight, some of these items go back to months when Chris Forsythe was here. And I had to go back and study them all. And when you get a new person, if you just say, fine, you just serve for a night, it's a continuing decision process. And I think it's better that you have that person come back and replace that same person for that item. I mean, it, it makes sense to me that that person has some knowledge that a new, that the regular member sitting might not have. And I think that's the way it's meant to be interpreted. That person sticks it out till that, there's a vote on that item.
Okay, all right, it's fine. Next item is right below that, number nine. This is a suggestion that we put public comment at item E. Now, my suggestion is that we move public comment right before adjournment, because there may be items that come up either under communications or miscellaneous business, where we want to give the public the opportunity to comment, which is unlikely to occur, but just in case. So I was suggesting a public comment move down from where it's at there to right before adjournment, if that was okay with the, the board members.
Sounds good.
And then, and I think I may know the answer to this, but I'll give you all a chance to pipe up on it. On page three, this is the, under number five, where it says time limits during public hearings. It says the chairperson may establish time limits for presentations of the board, which is probably not going to happen that often at all. Do we want to, I'm sorry, this is number five, time limits during public hearings.
Oh, right, okay.
It says the chairperson may establish time limits for presentations to the board. Do we want to give that to the chairperson, or do we want to make that a board decision?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I kind of questioned that myself. I'd like to have some kind of a board input on that.
Would you consider letting the, I mean, it doesn't really say here that the board members can't ask the chairperson to please consider setting a time limit with the decision being yours. But if you'd rather vote on whether there's a time limit, we can change that too. And that would be for...
I know I'd be more comfortable with that, because we rarely do it. So I would think having a board vote would be appropriate.
Okay. You don't want to set a particular time limit in your rules. You just want to be able to vote on it if it's...
Just in case, yeah.
If you have 100 people here and you have, okay, we can change it.
Would it be better to just change the language, just to simply say the board may establish time limits? Is that just a...
That's good.
And that was all I had. Do we want to see a final document, or are we prepared to vote on this with the changes that we just discussed and Mrs. Lancaster wrote down?
I've been reviewing those changes and putting them in on the final document. I'll go through those, excuse me, I'll go through those again in just a moment here. And if we have a comfort level, we can act. If we want to draft to look at it after the meeting, we can do it next time.
Will those include Mr. Courtney's comments too, because I, I don't know that I caught all of his?
I don't know, Ken, I don't know if I caught all yours, and I might like to, need to see.
Article Two, Section Two.
Oh, hold on. What I'm trying to do, and stop me if you think this will take too long. So we want to say board as opposed to chairman. Okay? Ken, if you could review yours again, Article Two, Section Two?
Article Two, Section Two, where you get to the word, second, second line, where you get shall by majority vote, may instead of shall, and by majority vote just scratched off. Board shall, board may designate an alternate meeting date.
All righty. I can do that here. So I want to get rid of shall by majority vote.
Shall, yeah.
And just substitute that with the word may.
May designate, yeah.
May designate, all right.
Okay, the next, the next section, the words as set forth in Paragraph Two of this article, just scratch those off.
Scratch these off?
Yeah.
As set forth in Paragraph Two, get rid of this?
Yeah.
Phrase.
Yeah.
Okay, crossed out, all right.
Okay, the next one is Paragraph Nine, that Mr. Lambert mentioned moving public comment to...
Just before H. I've got to know how to do that. Yep, yep.
Yeah. The next one is on five, which was the board may establish time limits.
Mm-hmm, got it.
Oh, I jumped the articles, way back up in two, six.
Good.
Oh, of the, yep, of the, delete the term.
Two-thirds of the board, yeah.
Delete of the entire membership?
Of the, of the entire membership, yeah, and keep...
We'll take a look at that.
Two-thirds of, of the board, five members for approval.
Okay, though, yep, I've got that in there. It'll be kept like that. It'll say vote of two-thirds of...
The board.
The board, five members for approval. Okay.
There's it. I thought there was another one that said the entire membership, but I don't see it now. I guess not. I think that's all of them, doesn't it? Okay, then I would, I would move to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Or move to adopt. Oh.
Yes, Mr. Neal?
I do have one question. I'm sorry to do this, but Article Two, Section Nine, Page Two, the issue about public comment. Public comment, we're, we're in this draft, I know we're moving it, but it's listed there as item E. Public comment for items not on the agenda? That's what that's supposed to be for?
I think it's for public comment on any item.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I, I took a look at the Planning Commission agenda, and I'm also thinking of city council meetings and such. And it seems like public comment is always up further, because I think that's presumably, and I may be wrong, and that's why I'm asking this, is I think they put it up further so that people who want to make a public comment on something can make their comments and leave and not have to sit through all the hearings. If that's the logic to it, shouldn't we have it up front?
Let's ask our city attorney.
I don't know.
Actually, you're the only CBA I've ever worked with that even takes public comments. Most boards are here to do the business of a variance, and public comments, you can't do anything, I mean, if they want to go to council with a gripe, that's where they go. It can certainly be left here in case someone perhaps missed, came in late, or something of that effect. But I don't think it's meant for the same purpose that you see it at, say, a council meeting. That's for, it's more inclusive of anything that the citizen wants to complain about. You're not likely to get a citizen coming into here to complain about taxes or something. You know, that'd be in the wrong spot. But, so, it doesn't really matter where you put it, because we have our public hearings for the issues. This would be somebody that came in late, or somebody that didn't like the rules of procedure, or something of that nature, so.
In fact, I don't believe we had public comment until about a year ago. Mrs. Bloom came in, and I think I asked her the question, should we have public comment? And she encouraged us to have it, so.
And I don't think you've ever had anybody.
Yeah.
I mean, they talked during the, but, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of unusual to see it for a BZA, because you're just not here for that. You're here to do the variance.
One question, Mr. Stratt, since you said in...
Yeah, I, in the 10 years I was on the Planning Commission, I don't think we ever had anyone before give us a, a comment, public comment.
It was a saw there.
It's always at the end. We never, we had very few at the end, very, very few. But you're right. It's a lot different when it's in council than it is for us. I think you're absolutely right on that.
Did you get any commentary? Because I noticed in Planning, they have it up front, just for items not on the agenda. Does any, for your, for, for Planning Commission, as I noticed, they noted specifically public comment for items not on the agenda. Does anybody even take advantage of it?
No.
Okay.
No. We've never had. In 10 years, I don't think we've ever had.
Chairman Clark, I think it's fine to leave it on, and I disagree with the chairman. I believe it's always been, at least as long as I've been on this board, Mr. Courtney can speak differently if he recalls. But I think I fear, I understand what Mr. Neal is saying, and putting it up like council, my, my fear in that situation would be that if you're really passionately against an ordinance request, that you're going to speak during public comment, and then when you have the public hearing, you're going to speak again. So you're going to do the double duty. And, you know, I, I think that's, this would ensure that that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, make the meetings longer, it would, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Courtney has a motion on the floor to approve the rules with the amendments we discussed. Is there a second to his motion?
I second.
Mr. Neal seconds the motion. Any discussion? Mr. Bartnik?
Just to clarify, so the public comment is now going to be after miscellaneous business?
Right.
Okay, we're keeping it as is. Thank you.
Yep. Seeing any, no further discussion, we'll go for a roll call on the proposed rules.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes. The rules are approved. The last item we have on the agenda is city attorney comments on variance standards. I think we all received an email from you with the information, anything you wanted to address.
Just that I asked Paul to give you a copy that has a revision date at the bottom. That's our proposed final. The first copy you got was rather a draft, but I had Alan Motzni review it, and he found a lot of typos, which I apologize for. But the revised copy is, unless you want to come in with revisions to that, we are going to use that for, we are going to give it to the public. We thought it helped that one petitioner. And even though it's designed for the board, if it's all right with you, we'll give it to the public to assist. And that's it?
Great. So, so that's, this, the revision date is 8/15/11? That's the one that...
That's the one. Anything else, throw out.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this is a real good, a good summary, and that should be available to the public.
I can make this a part of the Board of Appeals application as well.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I think it'll be a great tool for the public. It appeared to help out tonight.
Mm-hmm. Great. Anything more to come in front of the board?
I have one more thing. And Sue, I apologize, this is kind of on a fly. I just thought of this tonight. In looking at our meeting minutes that we approved for July, and then looking at the meeting minutes that we approved for June, those June meeting minutes, I don't know what I was thinking, but those are abbreviated to the point of, in my opinion, unacceptability. And really what's missing from the June meeting minutes that we approved is a description of the request. So when you read the minutes, you really have no idea, except that the board took action on something. If I could propose to return back to the board next month with the June meeting minutes, inserting those, just so you can see what they look like, I think that would serve everybody very positively. I just, I see a few people nodding. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure, sure.
Okay, good, good. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion or business to come in front of us? If not, we are adjourned.